Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I will declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured by attending your consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defemitory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during meetings is the lower council car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the one or all people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders, past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Sessnock local government area. For tonight's council's prayer, do we have Pastor De Wiltz here tonight? No, I might call councillor Dunn to lead us in prayer, councillors, we stand.
Most gracious God, we pray to the council of the city of Sessnock, its members and officers, direct their work and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of this city, so that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us through Jesus Christ's almighty. Amen.
There are no apologies, no leave of absence requests in. So we'll move on to the confirmation of the previous minutes. Someone moving that way, councillor Sandar, seconded councillor Moores. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Disclosures of interest. Right, councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a non peculiar interest, less than significant conflict, for the reason that I work part-time for a sale on Wallonby Road for the item number WI twenty-seven slash twenty-three.
Yeah. The... No other disclosures of interest, no petitions, public address. We'll ask Naomi Smith. Naomi Smith, to please come forward to the... To the lectern, you're speaking against the recommendation in report WI twenty-seven. And so, Miss Smith, you'll have three minutes to address council.
Good evening, Mayor Saval, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me a moment to address a matter that is of utmost importance to our community. The proposed Wallonby Road upgrade and evaluation tender T twenty-two-three to twenty-seven, preliminary engineering. I stand before you as a fourth generation resident of Sessnock, deeply connected to the area and invested in its wellbeing. As a business owner on Wallonby Road, I share the concerns that have been voiced by many residents, fellow businesses regarding this project. The concerns raised encompass a multitude of aspects, safety, economic viability and environmental implications. It is my sincere question to our elected councillors, why do you persist in pushing forward with Wallonby Road project when you are met with considerable opposition from numerous members of our community? While there has been some attempt at consultation, the numbers remain concerning. We've been directed to council's transport strategy twenty-eighteen for guidance, a strategy that outlines proposed works and their estimated costs. But I implore you to consider this. Is consulting with a mere zero point one-one percent, zero zero one percent of our population equating to sixty-five members of our community an adequate basis to make decisions about a project that holds estimated costs of thirty-three million dollars? Our community has grown, evolved and seen significant changes in the four years since that strategy was established. So tell me, councillors, before engaging an engineering firm to make plans around the Wallonby Road upgrade, shouldn't we wait for the new plan? And more importantly, the completion of the ongoing consultation with residents and businesses before deciding to spend one point seven million? Businesses along Wallonby Road, more than sixty-five of them, are dependent on street parking for their livelihood. It's a lifeline for their customers as well. Has an economic study been conducted to comprehend the potential fallout if these businesses are forced to close due to the proposed changes? Additionally, the project aims to address congestion and traffic flow, yet the proposed solution of adding six sets of traffic lights raises questions about environmental impact and carbon emissions from stationery traffic. Has an environmental impact assessment been undertaken? Has the council addressed emergency service access? For example, the residential fire on Allendale Road recently presents a critical challenge. How will emergency services reach those in need when street parking is unavailable? Has a safety assessment been conducted and what measures are planned?
Sorry, extension of time was moved by councillor Hawkins and it was seconded by councillor Dunn for one further minute. Those in favour? Councillor Jack, that's unanimous. So one further minute.
The concerns of residents and businesses extend to services regarding property access. Consider, for instance, how a local plumber might securely reach your property when parking is unavailable. Taxi operators, NDIS service providers, caregivers or lawn maintenance services will be similarly confronted with the predicament of insufficient safe parking. How can you ensure safe access for these services? What solutions do you propose to address these basic fundamental issues? I suggest that council rejects all offers and instead dedicates itself to comprehensive and meticulous discussions with the residents and businesses situated along the two point nine kilometres of Wallonby Road that will be directly impacted by the council's proposed changes. I beseech our council to withhold spending community funds before comprehensive studies on the environmental, safety and economic impacts are undertaken.
So you're finished?
Is that it?
Yeah. The questions? There's question councillor.
Yeah, Naomi, you say you're a business owner on Wallonby Road.
Oh, yeah.
There's, I know there's quite a few, I'm not sure exactly how many, but I would, how many jobs would you think are in jeopardy if we turn this into a four-lane road?
Okay, so there's probably an average of six to eight employees per business. There is more than sixty-five businesses on Wallonby Road. So there's a substantial economic loss for those employees and businesses, but also to the greater community. These are all service businesses.
Yes.
So we're not talking, I'm not talking about KFC, I'm not talking about those businesses on Wallonby Road, I'm talking about services, your fruit providers, your chiropractor, your hairdressers, you know, your bad, like badminton services, you know, we're not talk, yeah, I didn't include that in any of those figures, yeah.
We're probably putting pressure on at least two hundred positions.
I'd probably go with more than that, I'd probably say five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you, Mrs Smith, for addressing council. I understand you're speaking on behalf of quite a few residents and businesses and within or without, outside of Wallonby Road. Do you know what a preliminary engineering report is?
So it's the first steps in actually looking at the engineering that's required for the road to actually go ahead. It also stated that it was going to be plans in the documents that I read. So do you know what a preliminary engineering report actually is?
Well, I had to ask, I didn't just know immediately, but as I understand, this is to find out what is actually there now.
Okay.
This is to measure and map what we're even proposing as far as road widening, lane relocation, those sorts of things. This is to find out the answers, there's been a lot of questions asked that we don't have answers for yet.
Right.
Until we do this investigation and come back with some answers about what is there and what's possible, service relocation, I don't know what services are under the ground or whatever. Well, when this report comes back, are you planning on coming back to address council on behalf of the residents with concerns after this report can answer those questions? The current question?
Okay, well, it depends on what the actual report will actually come back with, but what I would ask you is, has the consultation of the businesses and the residents been sufficient enough to actually quantify spending one point seven million dollars on this engineering report?
So.
Not wanting to enter into debate.
Yeah, this isn't a debate.
Oh, sorry. Well, I'm asking the question, is it enough?
I'm happy to rephrase.
Is the consultation enough?
With another question, but I don't believe it is yet, sorry, I don't believe the consultation is completed by any stretch of the imagination.
Right.
But what consultation do you think, what consultation would you like in addition when we don't actually have any hard evidence of what's there and what's proposed?
But there's a document that's actually being distributed by your consultants that actually states there's going to be an extension of the lanes, so there'll be one to two lanes each way on Wallonby Road. So therefore, further consultation with the businesses and the residents on that road needs to be taken out to actually educate them and tell them exactly how that's going to impact them. So until those answers, until those, until we have those clear answers, then realistically, the council should stop and keep discussing it.
I think what councillor Hawkins was getting at was, we can't give you those answers until we do these studies, that's the problem, we need to do the studies.
Mr Mayor, if I, in the document you're referring to.
We're not here to debate.
No, no, just a question.
We'll debate, so councillor Hawkins has got another question.
I'm just, in the document you're referring to, that states lane, additional lanes, does it state removal of parking? Does it say no parking? Or is it, is it one of those words without a picture type?
It's the, it's, oh, I don't have my, I don't have the document with me, but it was given to your councillors today. It, um, I'd have to have a look at it again.
Yeah.
But that's what, okay, so we had a coffee with the councillors today, the mayor was there, he was the other week, and there were many councillors who discussed the parking of Wallonby Road. I also discussed information with Cameron and he actually also stated that this was a done deal. There's going to be four lanes and it's going to affect parking. There will be, there will be, there will be further consultation with people. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, we're entering way further into debate than we should be in this question.
I'll apologise, I had no intention of putting you on the spot or entering into debate.
Sorry, what was that?
I said I had no intention of entering into a debate.
Okay, sorry, I, am I, I'm just answering questions.
There'll be, you'll finish your question?
Yes.
Councillor Watton has the next question.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Naomi, for coming along and speaking. Just want to ask a quick question about the consultation that's happened so far with businesses. What's that look like for you and other businesses you might have spoken to, business owners?
Okay, so from West Avenue onward, there's been zero. And I've been informed that's because we're classed as stage two and so there is no consultation until stage one is actually planned and decided upon. When I spoke to Cameron, he discussed that there, stage one and stage two was hopeful to be finished at exactly the same time, so therefore consultation from West Avenue onwards needs to actually be addressed. But also, you, there are so many businesses who, we're small businesses, we're all in there doing the hard yards and we have two people turn up on your doorstep at an inconvenient time and they just start rattling off information and not actually putting anything in writing and, you know, residents also getting, sorry, we missed you, under the door. And there's, it's, I believe at the moment, it's lots of little discussions everywhere. So we had the coffee catch-up and there were little discussions happening at the coffee catch-up. And then you've got two individuals going around to businesses and residents saying one thing and then going across the road and saying another. And so there's no actual determined consult, like, it's, there needs to be a forum where it can be discussed and the information can be given, because there is information that is held by council that needs to be taught, needs to be given to the business owners and to the residents in a forum whereby it's the same information that everybody's getting. And our concerns can be heard, because, like today, I'm the only one being able to speak, but there's sixty-five business owners over there who would be absolutely, you know, they'd love to be up here being able to voice their opinion. And then don't, and then take into account all those residents, you know, they're so fearful of what they're going to lose. There's people who can't drive cars and they're worried about their services, hence why the NDIS and the taxi services was mentioned, they are really, really in fear. And this is what people are talking about and it needs to be addressed and consultation around that, you know, you guys need to be consulting with them, not telling them what's what, but actually like laying down real plans. And I know you're saying that this will give us the plans, but...
We're probably.
Ask the, ask, okay, we'll ask. You know, like, you've got to ask, is that sufficient enough? Like, do you think your, do you think what's happened so far has been sufficient enough? Thirty-three million dollars and a questionnaire of twenty-eight questions and sixty-five people answered? Like, I do not believe that thirty-three million dollars should be spent based on sixty-five people who filled in a form online, you know, there's sixty-five business owners here and none of those filled in that form. So, you know, they're, it's their livelihoods, you know?
Okay.
Doesn't your dad have a business on Wallonby Road?
Answered the question and we're now going on into debating it.
Okay.
Was there any further questions from your councillor Watton?
Just, thank you, I appreciate your answer. Just with regards to, so you're considering, you would propose a town hall situation, you not necessarily don't have like a town hall that could fit at all maybe, but more dialogue?
More dialogue.
Keep our questions brief, answers brief.
Okay, sorry.
Because there's a number more to come.
Yep. So I believe, yeah, I believe that it needs to be, I guess if it's Jay that's going to be the representative or Cameron who comes up and tells the residents exactly what's going on. Don't tell us that we can have consultation with anybody who comes and speaks to us and have opinions on whether there's parking on one side or parking on no sides or no parking at all and then just not give us any plans or not actually have any consultation.
Sure, okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I just want to say thank you so much for getting up and speaking, I know it's quite intimidating, I still get very nervous on the mic, myself, especially when you've got a good crowd. And I'm sorry that you got a bit interrogated when you've been up here talking. As a resident and a business owner, right, would you still think it's a great idea to spend one point seven million dollars on finding out plans when you don't want four lanes?
Can you repeat that question?
Oh, sorry. That was probably me not reading it when I wrote it down. Okay, as a resident business owner, would you still like to spend one point seven million dollars when you don't want four lanes?
No.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So if there's councillors here who don't want it, they need to say no.
Next question, I've got, just a little quick one. Do you think your business will shut down if this happens?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thanks, Naomi.
Next question from councillor Moores.
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming tonight, spoke very well. I'm sort of pinpointing where you are, I'm taking a punt to say you're virtually about West Sessnock, is that where you're at, the headquarters?
Yeah, just up the road from the Aussie.
Yeah.
Yep.
So how many parks have you've got there?
How many parks have I got?
Yeah.
Out the back of our, yeah?
Yeah.
So we've got six.
Do you have the zebra crossing where the chemist is on the opposite side?
No.
Further back that way?
Further down that way, yeah. So we've actually got parking out the back.
Near pick-up peak?
Yeah. Yeah, further up, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we've got parking out the back, yeah.
Yeah.
We're lucky though, we're lucky though, there are some residents that don't have a driveway, or some businesses that don't have a driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you had some consultation?
No.
No one's come in soon yet?
No, only the coffee catch-up. And, yeah, and what I've been given by other residents and other business owners, yeah.
Well, I had the chance to be able to talk to the director tonight and he tells me that every person will get a consultation from the council.
Right.
So it will come, but there's nothing to say that there's going to be four lanes there. There's nothing to say, it's going to be a four-lane. They find out that water pipe comes across here and until we have a look at what's down there, it's like mining, you don't know, and you don't know you can go in there.
Okay, so the documentation that's been given in the consultation is actually saying four lanes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, yeah.
So it's not, it's not carved in stone, you know, there's going to be four lanes.
So you're.
It's all questionable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's no more questions. Please thank Miss Smith for representation. We'll now move to deal with agenda item WI twenty-seven, twenty-two-three. Is someone moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded by councillor Sandar. Speaking on that, did you want to speak councillor Hill? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. I didn't have particularly exact question for Miss Smith, so I didn't want to put my buzzer on there on fear of wandering into debate, I just wanted to say thank you to her again for speaking to us tonight. My, I've heard from a few residents and members of the community just this afternoon about their concerns for this and have mentioned to them in a rather short email, because I was unable to write a full reply myself, about my understanding of why we need to get this engineering report got back to us. I hear from different people, a whole different number of concerns about, you know, will I lose parking in front of my property or how many lanes will there be in different spots? And from what I've been able to get from our briefings and discussions with staff, I can't tell you exactly in front of your business if there is going to be parking or if there is going to be four lanes, because we don't, we don't have that information that we need from this engineering report to be able to say, yes, the road in this section is wide enough, yes, we can cut the footpath down a bit short because the footpath's quite wide. And so I want to be able to have that information to help clarify these answers, I don't want us to be, for members of the community to think that some people are being told one thing and other people are being told another. I'd like to have this information so that I can go out to another session, like we had the coffee with the councillor out at Providore and talk to people and have some information that says, yes, we now know that there's certain utilities under the road in this location and that means that this, the lanes and the parking will have this effect in this spot and this is what's going to be the case. And so then they can tell us, well, no, we don't want that in that spot, or we think that this needs to be done a different way, or what kind of changes can be made in the plans now that we know what's under it to help accommodate what we're concerned about. And so I, that is why I'm supporting, supportive of this report to come back to council and for the community consultation, I'm very keen for that to continue all the way through the entire scope of the project. It is disappointing when you see certain council items come back with very minimal community engagement, you know, our operational plan was adopted in June this year and we had a very small amount of people put in submissions for that, which is a document that covers our entire twelve monthly spend on capital works, whereas we have other items such as the planning we did for the enrichment of our rail trail that did huge numbers of consultation. And so it's something that I think we need to keep working out to get the numbers up, but hopefully we can get this information back and we can continue our consultation and have better answers for the concerned members of the community.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, Mayor, I've just got a couple of questions at this point in time. The first one is, over six weeks ago, I put an email in asking for the advice that you have been telling everybody that we're going to be sued if we don't do four lanes. When can we, will all the councillors please get a copy of that advice that you're telling everybody about in the general public that if we don't do it, we will be sued?
I've never told anyone that.
That's a lie. That is an absolute lie.
Councillor Olson.
I got it, I got sixty odd people out here that'll tell you, you've said it at Providore.
Councillor Olson, I've never said that and I'm sure you would find many of my Facebook comments where people have actually asked that to me and I've responded that I know nothing of being sued.
So there's no legal advice whatsoever? You're saying there's no legal advice?
I'm saying, I've already answered the question, I said I haven't said that and I'm unaware.
So there's no legal advice that if we don't get perceived with four lanes, that we will be sued?
That would be a question for one of the directors.
Well, one of the directors, answer that please. Will the general manager, someone answer it for me please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, thanks councillor Olson. The question of suing, I don't understand where that comes from, but there's a legislative requirement with respect to developing options for Wallonby Road, that they go through environmental assessment and that process they also have to go on public display. They are, the upgrades for Wallonby Road, whatever means that they will take in a final arrangement, are dependent on releasing further lots within the North Bellbird urban release area. So there's a condition on the Bellbird North housing estate that they are limited to X number of lots until such time as upgrades along Wallonby Road can be made to improve capacity, safety and efficiency. What that looks like at this point in time is part of this preliminary engineering investigation.
So it's not proposed four lanes?
It may or may not be. In some capacity, there may be four lanes in certain areas where it's identified it can be feasibly accommodated. And it's really important, and I can't stress this enough, that we get as much community feedback as possible. And look, I understand that there's some miscommunication within the communication system itself, but there's also been information put up on council's webpage and there's one eight-hundred number that anybody can ring and ask questions.
Why haven't we got on Have Your Say on the council page?
Sorry?
Why isn't it on Have Your Say on the council page? So when they open the page, it's straight there, they go straight to it?
It's on the, it's on the project page, Wallonby Road.
Yes, makes it harder to find, why can't we have it on the Have Your Say page?
Take that on board.
Yeah, okay, next question. What, can we explain to everyone that's here tonight what we are going to get for one point seven million dollars?
Director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you councillor Olson. There's a variety of engineering investigations that need to be undertaken to determine what is currently out there in the road corridor itself, that is the pavement condition, that is the existing utilities, that is the existing road width, that is the existing corridor width, all of those need to be surveyed and investigated. The intent is to go out and do potholing, there's drainage that needs to be considered, there's future upgrades to utility such as the water main, all of those things need to be considered, that they are fit for purpose within the road corridor. On top of that, there's the surface, the surface condition of the road, which is the number of lanes, the ability to provide parking where parking currently exists, the need for parking, the upgrades to footpaths, to be shared paths so that there's better access for schools and the businesses, and things like loading zones and bus stops, all of those sorts of things need to be considered. And the investigations that need to be undertaken in order to move towards identifying a preferred option that needs to go into and inform a review of environmental factors needs to be undertaken first.
So were you here for the briefing, the night briefing we had on Wallonby Road? You weren't here then?
Unfortunately councillor, I wasn't there.
Unfortunately, councillor, I wasn't there then.
Yeah, because at, at that briefing, the briefing showed us some drawings of four lanes, and it was four lanes all the way from the Aus- Australia Hotel out to Aversworth, Aversworth Street. And that's what has been promoted in the press by the mayor and everyone else in council, it's four lanes. So what you're saying, we're going to spend one point seven million dollars to see if we can make it four lanes. Is that correct?
So the, the detail that you were referring to was the planning exercise as part of the traffic and transport strategy, which helped inform the traffic modelling, there was a, um, an LGA-wide traffic modelling model to identify what solutions could be explored to improve, uh, the congestion and safety and efficiency along Wallonby Road. That also helped inform, uh, our teams putting the submission for the accelerated infrastructure fund grant, which we were successful in, in gaining, which allows us to progress to a point where we can make a decision on providing the community with the upgrades that they need. But at this point in time, we need to do those engineering investigations and further modelling to determine that.
Do you know how much council's spent so far on this project?
No, I don't.
Could you notify council as soon as possible when, how much we've already spent, please? That's all the questions I've got.
Uh, councillor, sorry, I wouldn't, councillor Jurd.
Oh, I thought someone else was here for me.
Yeah, I pressed the wrong button. Um, if you want to wait and I'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Councillor Painter.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think my, um, question is to, on the director of, um, works in infrastructure. Um, have we entered into a voluntary planning agreement with, um, the developer for North Wallonby, uh, sorry, North Bellbird Development?
So... So, do you want, the, uh, director of planning?
Yeah.
I understand we, we haven't. There, there are however, conditions on the various consents for Bellbird, um, subdivisions that relate to roads.
Okay. So if, if this was voted down tonight and, and, and Wallonby Road, for example, doesn't go ahead, there's no legal implications back on council, is it? Is that right?
Uh, yes, yes, there are, because, um, part of the condition is around upgrading certain intersections and that all of that cost is not on the developer. It does require council to fund some of that as well. Um, there also are potentially some wider implications in that, um, the Bellbird subdivision, um, e- essentially the number of lots that can be released is capped until certain road upgrades are undertaken. And as councillors are all aware, the state government is looking at imposing housing targets on the council. And, um, in fact, that was one of the reasons why we were successful in getting the grant, because it helps release, um, further housing and lots. And so, you know, this council's already made commitments in terms of, um, this is what we intend to see happen in the community, and they date right back to when those consents were issued, you know, a number of years ago.
Yeah. Um, sorry, I think I'm back to you now, councillor Jurd, if you...
What, sorry?
Yeah.
Oh, my turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, when you apply for a grant, what's the process? Do we need plans to apply for a grant?
Director.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Jurd. You, you stand a bit of a chance of being successful with a grant, particularly the, um, accelerated infrastructure, uh, fund grant, which is through the Department of Planning. The more information you have to be able to present your case, the more success, more chance of being successful you are. We were fortunate that we had undertaken significant, um, investigations from a planning sense with respect to the traffic and transport strategy to be able to inform our nomination. If you, it's not to say that you, you do have to, but the chances of being successful are considerably less.
So did we have plans to, to apply for the grant?
Strategic plans that helped inform our ability to be able to get the, the grant. It's by no means, uh, the, the preferred option or the final option that is to be presented to council once this investigation work is undertaken with this contract.
Okay, so we started with plans that we, we're going to, you know, finalise, fix up, but we've got plans.
The plans are there primarily to inform the, the, the transport modelling and the traffic and, uh, transport strategy.
Yep, thank you. Um, next question. How do, how do we know the cost? Will it be thirty-three million all up?
The, the, the cost is capped at thirty-three million. We, we still got on to take the investigations, but, um, that will mean that we have a, a limited flexibility on scope. Um, but because we did have some information with the traffic and transport strategy itself, it provided us with a, a good opportunity to give a robust costing or estimate to be able to put in for the funding grant.
Okay. I guess a little bit concerned because a few things we've done lately have gone way over budget. Um, now, I, I'm not, I'm just not sure why we need to spend one point seven million dollars when pretty much most people don't want this. But anyway, I'll be voting no on this road. I lived in West Cessnock for eleven years and sold as soon as I heard this road was going on. As I know, it is going, what's going to happen. The back streets will turn into a nightmare. Matheson Street and Catherine Street alone, I would not want to live on, let alone the other side now too. I'm concerned, how is Bellbird Heights going to get out onto four lanes? From the briefing we had on this road, there is not one set of traffic lights for them. And that new estate off Cock Street is a left turn only, this is stage one, uh, only two point nine kilometres of four lanes. That's costing thirty-three million without, without taking the grant money off. And what I've seen from the concept plans about seven sets of traffic lights, I've had no residents reach out to me to say they want this. But I've been inundated with emails, calls and stopped on the street for them to express their concerns about how they do not want this road. The businesses on this road will not survive construction, let alone after, whether or not they have car parks or not. I've said this multiple times, give back the grant money and actually listen to the residents. They do not want this.
Councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, uh, question for planning. Uh, Peter, the development for, uh, Bellbird North, uh, if the developer would have had to put plans in for the X amount of lots that he would be building, uh, houses from Bellbird over to Mountview Road. And that would have had to have been passed by council. I don't think he'd just gone do it on his own.
Um, yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Um, a, a development application was lodged by the developer, um, total of around thirty-two hundred lots, something like that. Um, this council, in granting consent, um, approved intersection upgrades. So this council knew when it was issuing that consent years ago that it would be, that it and the developer would be upgrading the intersection that released out of that, um, that development as well as further road upgrades. So that was endorsed by this council on behalf of the community. And, um, that is something that the developer is, um, required to, um, to do before they can release further lots.
Okay, so if he's been, uh, if he's been, uh, approved for thirty-two hundred lots of houses, obviously, I knew we're going to pull him up at four hundred and fifty houses. He's still got two thousand and odd lots of land that he still wants to get his money back for the outlay of the land that he's bought. Wouldn't he have done that?
Yeah, abs- absolutely. And I mean, um, don't forget that, um, each of those lots is a development contribution is payable for roading infrastructure upgrades. Um, council is relying on receiving that development contribution to part-fund, um, upgrades on this particular road and the wider network itself. Um, so, yes, um, you, you've issued a consent to a developer that has said they can develop a certain number of lots. If you then tried to somehow restrict the development of that number of lots, I think there would be some issues for council to deal with.
Correct. Now, obviously then, if he's got thirty-two hundred lots out there that he wants to recoup his money back, obviously, this road will have to go ahead.
Um, I mean, the, certainly there need to be some intersection upgrades to allow the lots to, um, to, to be developed and, and, and operate and things like that. But, you know, don't forget, Cessnock local government area is the second highest growing local government in New South Wales. There is growth happening all over the place, whether the, this thirty-two hundred lots is but a drop in the ocean of new lots that are going to come on stream over the next decades. And Wallonby Road will not be the last road that needs to be upgraded.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, my next question is at the infrastructure. Uh, obviously, uh, the investigation, the engineers and all that, it's fully understandable. But I think the, from what, what I, what I can see what's happening here, we, we, there's been a lot of misinformant to the public. Uh, and, and what we've got to try and work out is, obviously I know what the engineering's for, to find out what's underneath. Can it be four lanes? There's nothing to say it's going to be four lanes. It's not casted in stone. It should still be, Wallonby Road will be two lanes.
Director.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, councillor Moors. E- exactly. The, 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 this preliminary engineering investigation, um, is, is necessary to determine a, a number of things, and one of them is the, the feasibility for being able to put four lanes, uh, within the scope of works, which is the four-kilometre section of Wallonby Road from Abbotsford Street, uh, through to Allendale Road. Uh, stage one, obviously, is to West Avenue. Um, the second component is to, to identify also how the engineering solutions can also, um, provide the outcomes that have been set with the section ninety-four contributions for Bellbird North.
Correct. So obviously, if we don't get this done, we're at a stalemate. You have to have planning on whatever you're going to do.
Congestion will only increase.
Yep. Right. And also, the other thing is, as, I've been in this town fifty years. My first home I built in Bellbird fifty years ago. Them houses, as well as the buildings of the shops, they would, to me, would be, I would be happy to say that some of them shops would be heritage listed. They'd be over a hundred years old. So where I've spoken to myself, I've been going, talking to the business people myself. Uh, like, if you, you look at, like, the people pig where their awning comes on to the footpath and they say, we're going to get rid of the gutter, you, you're fully changing that shop. Now, that shop was, was owned by McDonald's. Not the chip, not, not, not the Burger King of place, but McDonald's, who used to own the slaughterhouse up where Mildred is up on, towards Bellbird Bowling Club. So that's always been a butcher's there. So obviously, that's actually a little heritage shop. So as my concern I spoke to you about, uh, the guy who went there was, didn't sort of consult pretty thorough. I think that I really would be saying that we should be getting back to the public and start talking to them as well and keeping them as much informed before we, you know, we have a civil war. Thank you.
Councillor Wotton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First question, is it possible for councillors to get a copy of the conditions from the developer? Of what council actually needs to, uh, adhere to?
Director.
I'll show you to direct that to GM or?
Director.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's really, it's really only one condition that's relevant. There's probably, you know, sixty or ninety of them, but we'd certainly be able to get you the condition that is relevant.
Okay. But not the other, okay. Um, another question, I guess a bit more, more, it's not a hypothetical, but what, what if this project altogether, say, and I know it was touched on before by councillor Painter, and it was answered, but to put it as clear as, as possible, what would happen if we actually pulled out of this process altogether? What, what happens?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Wotton. Um, there's two things. One is that, um, that the, 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 the lots that are conditioned within the Bellbird North Urban Release Area won't, won't progress any further than what, uh, they're currently capped up as part of their condition. The second component is that, um, uh, you know, given that it has a growing population, that Wallonby Road will become more congested. It already has a poor level of service in, in the peaks, and it will continue to, uh, degrade over, over time.
Okay, thank you. So this leads to the follow-on. Would it be viable, this is, this is Plan A, and we seem to have all ducks lined up, all eggs in, heading towards this basket. What would happen if we pooled more resources? There was discussion about Ring Road. There was, there could be other potential option A, option dot B, dot C, whatever it might be. It, would it, obviously planning needs to happen. There, there needs to be some upgrades in that area. That's, that's a given. E- everyone absolutely agrees with that. But would it be, um, would it make more sense to look towards a bigger scope project that the whole community could get involved in, to be a little bit less contentious? To somewhat, to, to make it simple, is it possible to put more resources into, say, a Ring Road project or even bypass? Rather than make it look a four-lane, looking towards a four-lane, even possibility of it?
Uh, thank you, councillor Wotton. Um, that, that is also part of, um, the, some of the outcomes that were identified in the traffic and transport strategy, which is looking at the wider network. Uh, at the moment, we have funding for the Wallonby Road project to develop. Um, that funding is specifically allocated to the Wallonby Road project, so we do need to be able to demonstrate that we can progress with that project uh, and, and determine a, a viable solution for both the community and council in order for us to meet our requirements with the Department of Planning, with the funding provision we've been given. But it doesn't exclude, um, uh, council from investigating further the, the viability of those future ring roads um, or alternate routes as a result of, um, the release of, um, Bellbird North and, uh, the likes of Everton Release Areas such as Nalkabar and, uh, and further development around Cessnock. It all needs to be looked at in a holistic, uh, way, but at the moment, this particular issue and this particular, um, recommendation which has been put up for the tender i- is allocated. The funding is allocated for Wallonby Road.
Wallonby Road specific, okay. All right, thank you.
Councillor Olson.
Yes, uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, first of all, clarification. All we have to do for that land to be released is intersection upgrades. We don't have to put four lanes in. Is that correct?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Um, councillor Olson, without the condition in front of me, uh, that's my understanding. It was around intersection upgrade.
Yep.
Um, it, I don't think it mentioned number of lanes or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Now, Monique, I have another question for our director of works. I have a copy here, a photograph of a fly, flyer that was handed out from council staff to residents when they come in to ask about it. And second point on it says, "The upgrade will include, include the duplication of travel lanes between Aversworth Street, Bellbird and West Avenue. Cessnock to pro- Cessnock to provide two lanes each way and intersection improvements." So are we looking at two lanes all the way, or are we telling people the wrong information?
Again, councillor Olson, this is part of the reason that we're asking for, uh, this tender to be approved, which is to do the investigation, the detailed engineering, to be able to determine the, the need for four lanes for the entire length, for part length around the particular intersections that are required to release the, uh, Bellbird North lots. All of that needs to be investigated.
When's the start date for construction?
The start date for construction at this point in time is to be determined with the outcome of this, this, uh, this investigation.
And how long will this take?
Uh, eh, six to nine months.
Six to nine months. Okay, so what, what I, what I'm concerned about, um, we're going to start construction in six to nine months. We're going to get this, we're going to get this report in six to nine months' time. We're going to start construction straight away. We must have a design somewhere that the residents and the councillors can see that what we're, we're saying to these, these people to go out there and give them one point seven million dollars. This is what we want to build. Can we do it? So we must have a plan. There must be a plan to give to the, to the, to this person for one point seven million. Can we as councillors and residents see that plan?
Uh, councillor Olson, um, the, the construction works will not commence directly after this investigation is complete. There has to be an environmental planning approval... There has to be an environmental planning approval process, it needs to come back to council for endorsement of an approved option, then it needs to go out to tender for a construction contract. So there'll be a considerable amount of time between when a preferred option is identified, the community's being consulted on, the the planning approvals are completed, and when it goes up to council for endorsement.
Have we got a plan, a drawn drawing of what we want that we're going to give to this develop, this contractor for one point seven million? Have we got a plan or just a scope of works, what they're going to do?
Scope of works.
So there's no plan?
The the plan that has been provided for the purpose of gaining the the AIF funding was for reference, and it was a result of identifying through traffic modelling that there could be a solution provided along Wallonby Road, should we be successful with investigating it further.
Okay, so what, the way I see it here, a lot of residents are up in arms. Maybe it's misinformation, maybe someone's telling them a lie, someone's telling them the truth, I don't know. But they're up in arms. I haven't had one resident speak to me about a positive thing about four lanes on Wallonby Road. So what I would suggest is before this council moves forward with anything, spending any more money on this road, because we've heard tonight, we do not have to build four lanes, we do not have to build four lanes to meet our commitments to the developers, we have to do six, approximately six intersection upgrades, and we meet our conditions of that 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 development. So we can, we can wait, we can wait till all the residents have had their say, we can wait until all the businesses have had their say, we can look after these staff by delaying this process. And what I say here now is that we defer this report until we get a report back from the people that's going out interviewing these people that appear tonight concerned about their livelihoods, their homes and their safety. So I am moving an amendment that we defer this report until such time as we get that report back.
Yeah, so as the amendment seconded, does councillor Jurd, we now continue to debate.
Is the amendment from councillor Olson just for the report, for this report to be deferred, but then what other information are we awaiting to come, like what will be the next thing that comes back to us? And like, what are we doing in the interim?
Consultation, the consultation of all the residents and and business owners of the area, once it, once it comes back to council, and we can make a decision whether we want to pursue four lanes down Wallonby Road. If the residents don't want it, we should be supporting them.
So speaking on the amendment.
You can't speak on the referral?
Um, councillor.
Referral?
No, this is, we're now debating the amendment.
Yeah.
So now we're debating, we're now debating the amendment, this isn't, I've, to tell me, this isn't a procedural motion, as there is, it's asking for more information. So this isn't just deferring the report, this is deferring the report and requiring further information about it. So it's an actual amendment rather than a procedural motion that we would deal with immediately. So allowing councillors to debate the amendment before us, so.
They change the rules to themselves?
Councillor Moors.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That, infrastructure director, you're saying it's, to get this done, it's, you're looking, you're looking at, there's no start date, because the start date, to me, is, it's looked like it's going to be two and a half to three years away, the time all this rig roll goes through. So you just get this report, from my understanding is that we're just getting a report to say what's under the ground, then it comes back to council. This is only step one, am I correct? Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, yeah, the director, sorry.
Thank you, councillor Olson. The report won't identify anything other than how many people in the community and businesses have been consulted today. That is asking for information and feedback on what their concerns are relating to Wallonby Road.
Yeah, and once we get this report, it then comes back to council.
The 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 report, as I said, will only identify that without being able to engage an engineering consultancy such as the one that's recommended in this this tender report. We can't do any investigation, we don't have the, we don't have the the funding and the capability to be able to do that. We need to have a a professional service to be able to provide that information.
Yeah, that's correct. But I'm saying that it, once, once we've had this report and done, and it comes back, back to council for stage two, for for the second leg of what we want to do. There's nothing to say that this, once this report comes back, that that road's going to start straight away. It's still got to go back to the people, the residents.
Correct.
That's my case.
It goes out to community consultation as part of the environmental approvals process anyway.
Yeah, this is where I think a lot of people are just on the wrong, wrong view, thinking as soon as this report goes ahead, it's going to start. It's not going to start.
No.
It's just a report to tell us what's on the ground.
That's correct.
Then it comes back to council, then we go to section two of where we're moving forward. The road doesn't start.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Councillor Jurd, did you have a?
Yeah, I just want to speak on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm definitely going to vote, obviously, for the amendment, I seconded it. I don't see, when we've already got, what, how many residents here tonight and sixty five business owners that are already saying we don't want to do four lanes? We don't have to do four lanes, we obviously see that tonight with what we have to do to do the development. So I'm not spending, in my opinion, I'm not going to spend one point seven million dollars on a report that is a waste of time, in my opinion, when residents don't want it. At the end of the day, the amendment here is about holding and not spending one point seven million dollars until all consultation is done with residents. How many residents out there still haven't been consulted? We don't know. It's only just started, and there's a lot on that road. So I'm happily going to support the amendment of waiting till all consultation is done until we spend one point seven million dollars. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank absolutely everyone in the chamber for coming tonight, and I can totally understand why you've made your way to the chamber. I just can't believe we've gotten to this point. I I had an opinion on where we were at with this up until about lunchtime today, and that opinion was that we hadn't begun anything associated with this upgrade and the spending of this money. We hadn't gotten to a point where we had finalised anything, we hadn't even considered four lanes on Wallonby Road at all. And I was given a pamphlet today, which I was at, I was at the Wallonby Providore with the meeting with the councillor, and I I didn't get a copy of that, and that's, that's my fault, I didn't get a copy of that. But I hadn't read that that piece of paper actually said four lanes. And until I read that today, I wasn't aware that I was on a different page to nearly every other councillor here, to the staff, to the people that are out consulting, to the residents and the business owners of the LGA. And that really deeply troubles me, and it's all about communication. Now, I look at this amendment here, and what I see is a lot of people that are at a different point in the argument, and we still don't have clarity of exactly where we're at. Now, we've got councillor Jurd rightly says she does not want four lanes, and the residents and the businesses do not want four lanes. But then I look at the actual process, and I spent an hour or so with the director that day, and I asked the questions, and where I see it now is, how can anyone form an opinion of whether they want something or not when we haven't investigated any options? We aren't at a point where we've even looked at what our options are for Wallonby Road. What this is right here, it allows us to see what's under the ground, to see what the utilities are, to have a look and see how wide every part of Wallonby Road is. It may come back to us that there is no part of Wallonby Road that is capable of having a four lane road. And we can't make that decision, there are no plans, there are no current plans other than a line, a general line on a map that we can actually draw from. And I appreciate Mrs. Smith wanting to know what plans we've got, and the true fact is, we don't actually physically have plans or a direction until we actually get a scoping study and we know what we can do and what we can't do on Wallonby Road. Now, I I'm not supporting this deferral because ultimately I disagree with it, but I do agree with the roots of where this has come from, and it's come from miscommunication, because everyone in this room, I can guarantee, is on a different page of where they think we're up to. And the way I see it, we are right back at stage one, where we're beginning to look at our options. We're not at a point, and and I I struggle with what I'm hearing around consultation with current businesses and what they've experienced, because it, that is so preliminary, it's not funny. We shouldn't actually have gotten to that point until we had more of an idea of what we can and can't do. So what I'm asking generally is for us to have a plan for the entire stretch of what we're going to do, and actually assure the business owners and the residents where and when they actually get the opportunity to have their say, so they can be heard and they understand what they want, and they understand where we're at. Because right now, I I'm assuming that the residents think we are further along in this process than we actually are, and that's a problem, because I can now see that we are right at the start, but there are people in the community that believe that we've already committed to something that we haven't committed to. But we will never know what we need until we actually get a scoping study of what we can and can't do. Now, in ten or fifteen years' time, when three thousand two hundred homes come on board, they're going to want to come into town, and we need to accept that, we need to understand that. But also, we're talking about a ring road and Wallonby Road. Wallonby Road is a local traffic area with issues right now. A ring road is something that will take ten to twenty years to come on board, cost hundreds of millions of dollars. We have a look at the Singleton Bypass, it took them twenty years of planning to then get the state and feds to come on board to pay for it. Now, it is not one or the other. We need to do both, we need to plan for both, and we need to have some kind of congruity between what we need to do right now, what we're going to do in the next five or ten years, and then what the ring road's going to do for us in the medium to long term.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, just, just briefly on this amendment, I'm not sure what's changed for councillor Olson, and I just, I can't, I can't support deferral for more consultation, because until we know what we're consulting about. Since two thousand and nine, council adopted a contributions plan from Belbert North, so we knew there were going to be things affected, we knew things were going to have to be upgraded and and spent, and that council voted to implement this. We've moved along, collecting money, we knew it was going to get to a stage, this isn't a secret, this hasn't come out of of left field, this hasn't been dreamed up this current term of council, not even the last term of council, or the one before that. This has been happening, it it's not a surprise. So I don't know, I mean, I apologize to the residents if they're under some misconception that that we've agreed or we've we've decided on anything, because as councillor, until we get this information, we can't, we can't say what we're consulting about. I I'm happy to go and and talk to people about what they want, what they think it's going to look like, I've got my own ideas of what I think it's going to look like, but that doesn't matter, because that doesn't tell us exactly what's there and what we can and can't achieve. As for for things, for things changing, and and the reason, I think, maybe, that some people have got a a misconception, is that when we have councillors here telling the council meeting that if we don't start making changes and making, implementing some improvements and getting four lanes running along Wallonby Road, we're going to be sitting here talking about it next year, the year after, and every other year. So let's start moving on these plans and get these money together. Now, that's it, that's a direct quote, it's on YouTube, you can, you can look at it. Why are we're telling people this? So obviously, some people that have been around since its adoption in two thousand and nine, they know what is coming, they've said this. So it's just taking way too long, way too long for me and way too long for the residents of Cessnock, to come here tonight and say, I've never had anybody talk to me about it that that wants it, having previously said this has to happen sooner rather than later.
If you're quoting people, you probably should at least reference to your quoting.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, the quotes are from the seventeenth of March, twenty twenty one, the previous council, which I wasn't, wasn't privy to, but they're to the other councillor that was able to vote and approve this back in two thousand and nine, there were two of us on that council that are still here today, there was myself, and there was councillor Olson. So he's telling the council meeting, we have to get four lanes along Wallonby Road, to then stand here and say, I don't know anything about it. I I can't understand what could possibly have changed other than, I don't know. So this, this proposal, it's, it's there, it's been there, we've been collecting money for it, now it's time to get on and do the investigation about what we can and can't have. What is there? What will fit, what won't fit, what are the options? So that we can go to the community and actually answer some of their questions. There's been some valid questions raised, there's been some valid concerns put on the table. If that's what our consultants at this stage were out to gather that information, that's wonderful, that can go into what we consider, but until we know what we've got to offer, we can't really take on board what we're going to propose. So I I just, I can't, I can't see that deferring this for more consultation about a fourteen year old plan that some of us have known about and some of us have supported all the way along, is really going to help anything, because we still don't have the details on what is there. As for the ring road that people have have talked about, as though these two are mutually exclusive, you can't have a ring road if you've upgraded Wallonby Road's traffic capacity, and you can only have a ring road, you can't upgrade Wallonby Road's traffic capacity, that argument doesn't exist. The previous council, not once but twice, it came to the council to allocate funding to investigate the ring road and what that means for the council. You'd have to ask the councillors that voted against investigating a ring road, what their motivation was for that.
Is that a question or a comment you're you're making? I think it's in.
Uh, it was a comment, you'd have to, I think is, you'd have to, it's what I said.
It's, I I've asked if it was a comment, it's a comment, councillor Hawkins has the floor.
It's a comment, but I don't understand how. Mr. Mayor, look, I don't, I mean.
Councillor Olson, come to order.
Mr. Mayor, once again.
Councillor, pause, we've now got a point of order.
Point of order. I've got, I'm offended by those comments. If he's going to question me, and I'm not allowed to answer him, he should retract them and apologize to me.
Councillor Olson, I, he made a comment that you would have to ask councillors that voted against funding the ring road, why they voted against the the ring road. I think anyone.
Sorry, Mayor, Mayor, sorry, Mayor, it was about funding, not about the ring road.
It was, he he clearly said council voted twice to allocate funding towards planning for the ring road.
Which we already had approved, which we already had a plan for in two thousand and eighteen, and we're going to spend another million dollars on it, which was never needed, and we're spending a million dollars now on nothing.
This, this isn't a debate. No, I I've made my ruling, councillor Olson.
Mr. Mayor, if it will save.
Sorry, pause, pause, pause. We we have a motion of dissent moved by by councillor Olson. The the rulings for dissent motions are that that both only councillor Olson is entitled to speak and myself, so I'll invite councillor Olson to state why he believes that my ruling
Mayor, in the last eighteen months since you've been mayor, I've been censured five times for offending people, and not once, not once has anyone been, I hadn't been made to apologize, I've had to apologize to. But here I am complaining about comments being made about myself and your ruling that's okay. That is, that's, that's. That is, that's totally double standards to the way I am being treated and bullied by this council and by you as mayor. And now. And now not asking the councillors to apologize is just as bad as not censuring me and wasting ratepayers' money.
Councillor Olson, I made my decision in that councillor Hawkins made a statement about previous council resolutions. He spoke about two resolutions where council had voted to allocate money towards building the ring road. He indicated that you voted against both of those. Sorry, in, I stated he made the things about allocating money towards planning works, investigations towards the concept designs for the ring road. I think concept plan was used in the motion. So those were motions of council that you did vote against, because I was on council during that time. And councillor Hawkins said, if anyone would like to know why councillors that didn't support it then, they should ask those councillors. I don't believe there was any validity in why that is a point of order. So I've made my comments, you've made yours, we'll now put it to a vote. So those in favour of supporting the motion of dissent, councillors Watten, Olson and Jurd, those against, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Painter, and Savell, I'll declare it lost. Councillor Hawkins, you have thirty seconds.
And look, I will apologize if I've hurt anybody's feelings. So I did not mean to hurt anybody's feelings. I was simply making the point that there's different opinions on how this should proceed. Some people have supported a whole raft of different options. Without another hour to discuss the ring road and the concept plan, that's a whole separate issue. This is about getting the information we need. We need this information to be able to go out and genuinely consult with people about what we can offer. At the moment, there's a whole bunch of what-ifs, we need to answer those so that we can move forward.
Thank you. We do need to move on this item, I think we're at a time of dealing with this item.
Clarification, I'm seeing I put the amendment up. I just want to get clarification on councillor Dunn making statements about we didn't know when we were going to build the road. At the briefing we were at, at the briefing we were at, we were supposed to start construction at the end of 2024. That was construct.
It's not a.
Beg your pardon, Mayor, I haven't finished the question. Is, so what we're saying, what we got in the briefing was misinformation. Do council staff give us misinformation?
I don't believe. Do you want to answer the director?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. No, I can answer that, councillor Olson, even though I wasn't at the briefing. The construction, fantastic, the construction start date is dependent on the outcomes of the investigation, which is dependent on the ability to go ahead with the tender, to be able to do those investigations. So this investigative work needs to be undertaken before we can actually come to a solution.
Yeah, yeah. We're now moving that the, no, councillor Olson, there's been a move that the motion be put by councillor Burke and seconded by councillor Hill. All those in, yeah. Move the amendment be put to be voted on.
Yes.
To vote to put it. No, so procedural motion that we put the amendment. So we're voting at this point to put the amendment. So all those in favour of putting the amendment, councillors. So this is. Sorry. Sorry, just to clarify, we'll just redo that, I'm just advised we don't put this motion as a procedural motion, we just go straight to the, to the vote on the amendment. So we'll. Yeah, so this is a vote on the amendment, so all those. Yeah, the amendment is councillor Olson's amendment to defer the motion. So those in favour of councillor Olson's amendment, councillors Painter, Watten, Olson and Jurd, those against, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell, I'll declare it lost, we'll now return to the motion. Those. Councillor Olson.
Just one question or two questions I have. On the front page of the paper, there was a press release, you, councillor Moore and Hawkins, saying we've got four lanes coming down Wallonby Road, is that misinformation?
Yeah, councillor Olson.
On the front page of the paper, there was a fellow mayor saying we've got four lanes coming down Wallonby Road. Was that misinformation?
Yeah, we're at the time of the debate, the motion needs to be put, we're at the.
So you're not going to answer the question, Mayor? People out here want answers. The people have come down tonight to get answers and you're not going to give one?
Councillor Olson, before we put the motion, I will speak and I will want to talk about this. I wasn't going to, I was going to leave this to councillors before the motion's put. But this came, we can go back, it was referenced by councillor Hawkins in 2009.
Put it, what are you talking about?
We're talking on the.
Oh, you closed the debate, Mayor, you closed the debate. You closed the debate, Mayor.
Councillor Olson, councillor Olson, I have the floor, councillor Olson. Councillor, councillor Olson, I have the floor.
Point of order. Point of order. Did you not close debate?
No.
And you're putting it to the vote, you said I couldn't speak anymore.
Councillor Olson, I have said we had not closed debate, which is why I allowed you to ask the question. If the debate was closed, you would have been not entitled to ask the question. So the answer was no, debate was not closed. We'll go back to 2009, when this project came up and you voted to support intersection upgrades and four-lane highways on the thing. You voted to do intersection upgrades and reconstruction to widen four-lane to two-way on Wallonby Road in 2009, voted by you. In 2001, councillor Hawkins. Councillor Olson, I am speaking, councillor Olson. Councillor Olson, I am speaking and I will speak on this. Councillor Olson, I've ruled on your point of order before. Councillor Olson, you can speak on the motion of dissent.
Yes, Mayor, so what happens? You're speaking on a issue and you could be telling people lies. But as a chairman, you are allowed to say, you're allowed to say, you're allowed to say whatever you like, but as soon as I call a point of order, you're the one that's going to rule on it. And that's what you just did, you ruled on a point of order that you were speaking and you were the one doing the talking. I was challenging what you were saying and you, as a chairman, says you're allowed to debate issues. The chairman, in no other place is allowed to debate issues, but the chairman here is debating issues and when you call a point of order, you're going to rule on it. So how the hell is this council being run properly?
Councillor Olson, the code of meeting practice allows the mayor and the chair of the meeting to speak on agenda items, there's nothing that precludes that. You've been advised that before in writing. It's an option that I've exercised in the past, as you've mentioned previously in your debate tonight, that there's people in the room here that would probably like to hear what my view is on this. So I'm allowed to speak on this. And I'm talking about the project and where it's up to and why I have a certain view. So I will be speaking on the project. That is my, my comments on the motion of dissent. So we'll put the motion to dissent, those supporting councillor Olson's motion of dissent, councillors Watten, Olson and Jurd, those against, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Savell, I'll declare it lost. As I was stating, we've moved through this from the Section 94 campaign. I had spoken about and spoken about it quite at length in council, in publicly, about prioritising a ring road for this community and actually allocated funding towards addressing this. Councillors, we've spoken about which councillors did and didn't support that at the time and it's been quite public in the media. But it's something that is still progressing and will still be considered as part of our our traffic and transport strategy that is due to come back to council. So for those residents that are asking, why aren't we pursuing a ring road? The answer is, we are still pursuing a ring road, there is no thing. But there are requirements that are going to need to be dealt with around that. There's requirements around where does the road go through the new development? There's requires, where does it go through mining land if it goes through that way? What's the legislative requirements around acquisition of the land? The legislative requirements about what the mine's required to do under its rehabilitation? There's all of these things that are going to take time. There are many homes going in Belbird. There are many homes that have been growing in Millfield and other communities that drive along Wallonby Road. I drive along Wallonby Road every day and know how congested it is. What we're seeing is, it was spoken about earlier about misinformation and things and why people are upset. And I think part of it's because people have been told that they're going to lose all their parking. And that's not correct. We've spoken about that tonight. Council has prioritised the need to maintain parking for businesses and residents. We know that's going to be considered as part of these plans. There's many people in the community that are upset about misinformation that's been put out there. We need to get the real information out to you. And what I'm saying to the community is that until we can get proper plans done, where we can get actual information out to you, the only information you're going to get is coming out of people that have alternate agendas and pushing misinformation. So we need this real information to be able to give you. Because for people that are concerned as businesses about parking and when there's plans there about parking and there is potentially still parking along these areas, then those concerns may be different. The point of the community engagement is to look at what our traffic and transport strategy said, what our previous Section 94 contributions, plans had said, and said, look, we need to do these information, intersection upgrades, we need to look at improving traffic flow. There's consideration in the traffic and transport strategies that have said we need to consider four lanes through there. Now, four lanes does not automatically mean no parking. There are a considerable width on that road, we need to measure the road. There are bike lanes on the road that may be able to be addressed through shared pathways on the side of the road. There is a, we don't know the road width corridor, which is why we need to do these plans. So the engagement that's happening, people are going out there, they're asking people for their thoughts about anything that they're concerned about. That's why we're doing engagement now, so that your concerns can be heard, they can be put into the design. So hopefully, when the designs come back to council, you don't have the same concerns because your concerns have been addressed. Thank you, will now be put. We'll now put the motion, councillor Hill has moved the motion be put. We'll now put the motion, I think it's been, the motion's been, he's moved it to be put. Councillor Hill had moved that the motion be put. We'll now put the motion, all those in favour of the original agenda item is councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Savell. Those against councillor Painter, Watten, Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. We will now move to consideration and adoption of all reports by englobo. Moving that way, councillor Dunn.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, having read and considered the reports in the agenda related to item CC47, investment report, July 2023, CC49, disclosures of interest and written returns, CC51, resolutions trackings report, council adopt the recommendations as printed for those items.
Okay, seconded for that councillor Burke, all those in favour. So this councillor Olson, he's voting in the englobo list. So those in favour, councillor Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell. Those against councillor Olson. We'll now move to Merrill Minnet's. Circulated a Merrill Minnet to councillors as a supplementary agenda item, noting that on Friday, the first of September this year is the hundredth anniversary of the Belbird Mine Disaster. It was a tragic event that occurred in our community where 21 miners tragically lost their lives. I'd like to thank councillor Moores for raising some of the items in this with me around the naming of streets. In regard to this, there has been an invitation circulated to councillors wishing to attend the memorial event that will be held. And it's, yeah, something I encourage everyone to attend if they are able to. So I will move this way and councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. This hundred-year anniversary is a hundred years for the miners that have been killed in Belbird. I put to the council that the amount of new helms that are going up there and new streets that the GM talks to family for permission to name streets that are going up in the new developments after the names of the miners who have been killed, who have lost their lives in the mine over the years. And with the names of the miners being there, obviously, it still keeps the history of Belbird and the people that worked at Belbird. Rather than kids growing up in years to come, not knowing what was what, not knowing there was mines and twelve mines in this town. So I've asked the GM, if possible, if he could get in touch with family to see if they give us permission. And then we then start pushing to get new streets named after the miners. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Durbajal, but not on from before or to speak on. So no further debate on this item. We'll put the motion, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Now move on to motions of urgency. No motions of urgency. Report GMU5 2023, moving that way. Councillor Hill seconded councillor Burke. No debate, put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Report PE27 2023. Report PE27 2023, moving that way. Councillor Hill seconded councillor Grine. No debate, put the item, all those in favour. Councillor Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Olsen and Saval. Those against councillors Watten and councillor Jurd. I'll declare it carried. Report PE28 2023, moving that way. Councillor Grine seconded at councillor Hill. Speaking the item, were you wanting to speak councillor Grine in moving? Or, yep.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Saval. I'm very happy to see this come up for Currie Rotary Park. I think it's very important to open up, you know, the possibility of having night markets and night events. Also with all the works that are happening with the grant that we've currently got, to have those sort of abilities to have, you know, the special lighting upon our trees is going to make such a big difference for our little community. And I thank council and the staff, especially Tony, for putting the effort into making this happen. Thank you very much.
King, councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. I've got a question. Does council have a priority list when it comes to work? Meaning, do we have things that take precedence over others? If you're unsure what I mean, I'm asking, is safety a priority over beautification?
This question to the director. Oh, sorry. Director, yep.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. I'm not sure that the council has a written policy on that. Those decisions can be made by council as it sees fit.
Okay, thank you. I ask this because I've recently asked council to look into lighting on staircases, a staircase near Bridges Hill Park that a lot of people use to exercise. And I also asked about lighting for the Mountview Basin Car Park as kids leaving after footy are almost getting hit in the car park as it's pitch black. The response I got is what I expected from council about it not being in the budget, et cetera. But when this comes to the next council meeting, you can surely understand why I'm annoyed. $50,000 on coloured lights. Yes, they sure would look nice, but when there are safety issues in other areas of the LGA, I just can't support it. Thank you.
Councillor Painter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm excited to see this happening in Wooddees and Currie. Recognition of the community is growing and becoming more significant in the social LGA. I'm also supportive of councillor Jurd's concerns with safety at Bridges Hill Park and at the basin. So I'd like to add a dot point of acuity to further investigation into possible lighting in Bridges Hill on the staircase and at the basin where a point of concern.
Yeah, the mover and seconded happy to accept.
I'll move it.
Well, as.
Okay, was councillors Grine and Hill, you're happy?
Is with this item being related specifically to money coming from a particular area, is that suitable for these two dot points to be on this motion? I'd be happy to accept the two dot points and for the investigation to be done, maybe in a notice of motion if that is more appropriate, just verifying on this, if it works in this report.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, they are sort of two separate related items. I mean, this one's specifically in relation to the master plan that council adopted and how it's funded. And the request from councillor Painter is really around a safety issue that sits with probably with the existing structures. So it's probably more appropriate as a notice of motion.
So it'd be more appropriate to come as a norm?
Notice of motion.
Okay.
Councillor Burke.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I was just going to make a comment. The safety and tourism related activities are completely different. And I totally support this because we need supporting more tourism in our local area to attract visitors. And it is good to see that things are happening in the Currie-Currie area. I think it's a, it is a significant investment, but that is what the tourism related projects reserve is designed for. It's not designed for the lights at a recreational park. However, that is important as well. So yeah, I'm fully supportive of this for the Currie folk.
Councillor Moores.
Virtually, Mayor, I'd say councillor Burke has took the stage because obviously tourism and safety is two different things. So the money can't come from one to the other. But if there's a safety problem at Bridges Hill Park, it should be put in writing and put straight to the council so we can follow it up. Thank you.
We'll now put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Saval. Those against councillor Olsen, councillor Jurd, declare it carried. Report PE29 2023, moving that way. Councillor Burke seconded councillor Painter. No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. Councillor, sorry.
Sorry, Mayor Saval, you were very, very, very fast on that one tonight. This report states centres refer to all city and town centres across Cessnock, including commercial precincts Currie-Currie, Brankston, Weston and Greeda, and smaller neighbourhood centres like Head and Greeda, Abermain and Bellbird, with centres addressing the following development issues: active street frontages, addressing the street and public domain, awnings, building materials, finishes and colour. And colours, built form, setbacks and street hierarchy, building height, roof form, gateways and landmark sites, surfacing, landscaping, sustainable. Sorry, it's just what's on the report. Anyway, which a lot might say we do this already. What are you talking about? But this reminds me of the Hunter Regional Planning Document. As in that document, it talks about how they are planning on doing more infill housing, multi-level housing and different style of housing to meet the diverse nimble neighbourhoods with sequence development. How they are going to build with net zero, sustainable housing that is resilient, plans for our waterways and being non-car dependent. So when I read this report, I just seen that it's the same as the Hunter Regional Planning Document and just not sure why it's needed to be done twice. Or is this now bringing it into policy for us at Cessnock Council? Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Saval. Just a quick question about, it's on page 77 of the report, the enclosure one. Just with regards to allow for outlook to and surveillance of the street. So I've been approached with questions concerning this and it goes back to a norm that I raised about static cameras being placed to protect our assets. I just wanted to get some clarification if I could. A bit of a late question. Where are we up to at the moment with our privacy policy? There was questions about that raised that we didn't actually have it up to date. So I just wanted to keep some clarity.
Acting Director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Watten. I didn't have to take on that as I'm not exactly sure where it's up to, but I'm happy to get back to you.
No worries, thank you.
No further debates. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Saval. Those against councillor Olsen, councillor Jurd. Declare it carried. We'll now move on to report CC44 2023. Moving that way councillor Hill seconded councillor Sander. No debate, all those in favour. It's unanimous. CC45 ward boundaries. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. I'd like to move the recommendation with the additional text for point, dot point two. The recommendation should read that council determines the preferred ward boundary option. Option, so that's ward boundary option three. As circulated via councillor memo dated 16th of August 2023.
Now seconded councillor Sander. No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. That's unanimous. Report CC46, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Just a little genre on the logistics part. I think I'm adding additional information underneath point, dot point two, I believe, if I'd like to list the delegates attending. Is that correct?
Dot points one and two, I think it's there.
Oh, yep. So underneath dot points one and two, for the council determines the delegates to attend the local government New South Wales annual conference as Mayor Jay Saval, councillors Hill, Grine and Dunn.
Okay. Seconded councillor Sander. There's no debate, we'll put the item, those in favour. It's councillor Jurd, so councillor Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine. Sorry, it's unanimous. Moving on to report CC48 2023. Moving that way, councillor Hill seconded councillor Painter. No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. CC50, moving that way councillor Hill seconded councillor Grine. Speaking, that councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. I'm going to be moving this resolution as written. The recommendation that's come to us at council from our advisory committee in regards to council taking the approach of just informing the community that the, we are holding, that the country is holding the referendum later this year and that we provide members of the community with information about, pointing them at the government website, the voice.gov.au. And to make sure that they are aware that they need to enrol to vote. You know, I've had a couple of my friends come and say to me, do I need to, is this the same kind as election? Do I need to be enrolled to vote? You know, am I going to be copifying if I don't get there? And that is the truth and that's the fact. So you need to make sure that you go to the age, make sure you're enrolled to vote. A lot of new young people coming over the age of 18 since our election earlier this year. And I think that it's important on this topic to, for us to take heed on the advice that we've gotten from our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Committee, that we just put out the information for people to form their opinion on the vote. And that's why I'll be supporting this resolution tonight.
Councillor Olsen.
Yes, Mayor Saval, point five about showing the community, informing them of the referendum and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is it showing both sides, yes and no?
Yes, this is a non-partisan.
Doesn't say that in there.
Thing.
Doesn't say it in there.
It's just the generic.
It doesn't say it in the motion.
But I think by not saying in the motion that we're supporting the yes vote or the no vote is about supporting neither.
I think, I think, well, personally, personally, I don't think council should be having anything to do with it. I don't think it's a local government issue. I think it's a federal issue and the federal government should be promoting it. It should be nothing to do with us here. It's got nothing to do with us as a council. It's a federal issue and we don't have to do it. If the federal government want to promote it, they should be out there promoting it. I don't, I don't understand. Is there a cost to this for council? There must be some labour costs somewhere in setting it all up. How much is this going to cost us?
Thank you councillor Olsen. The cost for all fact sheets actually come courtesy of the Commonwealth. So it doesn't cost us at all. The wages will be in place anyway, so there's actually zero cost to council.
I can't, I couldn't understand, sorry, I'm partially deaf. I just need to, if you could say it again, please?
Certainly. So there's, the wages will be expended by council anyway. So there's actually zero cost to council. All information is provided by the Commonwealth. So there's no cost additional there as well.
So who are we going to contact to get the information off?
As per the resolution councillor Olsen, it's all through voice.gov.au. That's the information we'll be providing.
Okay, so, oh, look, I'm voting against this motion because I don't support council getting involved in federal issues and I don't think we should get involved in state issues either. I think it's up to them to promote it, whether it's voting yes or no. It's nothing to do with local government. It's the federal government who's trying to change the constitution and not the council. We will have, we should have nothing to do with this whatsoever. And I think I'm concerned by us putting this motion through here tonight. We're saying we support it. I personally don't see the need for it, a vote of the yes. I don't support the voice. I am Aboriginal and I don't support the voice. And I will, I don't see what it's going, how it's going to change my life by having a yes vote approved. So I'll be voting against it tonight.
Councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just quickly wanted to say, this committee meeting was definitely much better than the last one. I think everyone that was in attendance finally was able to understand what I was trying to say at the last committee meeting before it went south. I can't vote yes on this tonight though. As I stated in the committee meeting, I much rather the funding for this Voice to Parliament to be spent on helping the people and purely this is why I have to vote no. I leave it, I leave it to that as apparently I'm not supposed to have an opinion on it because my opinion is not what they want me to say. Well, actually, I will say it. If Clayton Bar can have his sign in the main street saying yes to the voice and Dan Rappacoli can have his staff ringing residents of this LGA to ask them if they want help with the voice, I should be able to say no, the reason I say no. I will not give up my sovereignty rights. Quote from the Hunter Regional Planning Document, each Aboriginal community has its own priorities and interests, so how can there be one voice? Or this from the six city discussion paper, which remember we are automatically signed up to, the move towards active recognition of the First Nations people, ongoing custodianship of the land is a fundamental shift in New South Wales strategic planning. Jess is the Uluru statement from the heart calls for the establishment of a First Nations voice in the Australian Constitution. The commission will create the space and mechanisms for the First Nations people's voice to be embedded into the strategic planning of the six city region. A lot of changes that will happen from non-elected members. But this is what I think. All I can say to everyone is research.
Councillor Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I, if this needs to be an extra dot point or if we can just amend dot point number five and add in the link to the AEC reference to their yes/no case pamphlets. Should that be a separate dot point?
So I think you're, so what you're suggesting is after the, so social media sites, Australia.
It's just another source of information that we can make available.
And, and it would say, and the official AEC website?
Yeah, I can give that to you right now.
So are you comfortable to accept this councillors, just Grine and Hill? Yep. So adding, adding it in.
After, before fact.
Yes, I'd be.
And the aec.gov.au forward slash referendums forward slash pamphlet. Pamphlet, pamphlet. In my accent, it's pamphlet. Pamphlet.
Yep. So fix up the, we'll fix up the. Yeah, we'll fix up the exact site. Maybe it, maybe it should just, just to make sure, just say official AEC site, the AEC referendum site. You happy with that councillor Jackson? Yep.
Thank you.
So do. Are we happy with that? Yep. Okay, so that's been accepted and now becomes part of the motion. Councillor Painter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Even though I agree with councillor Olsen, it is a federal issue. I still think that governments of all levels have a responsibility to disseminate information to the people as long as it's non-biased. information to the people as long as it's non-biased and, um, so that people can make the best informed decision as possible. Also to encourage people to, um, to enrol, so they've always heard in all government, um, decisions. So, um, I'd, I'd encourage all to be enrolled and all to do their own research and to make up their own mind on this issue. Um, I'll, I'll be, um, supporting this motion, um, on the facts that I, I just think that people should have more, um, access to as much information as, as possible.
Uh, councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Saval. Um, I personally, like, look, from my background of working in social work and when you take, you have contentious issues, the advice that I give people is to put all cards on the table and to withdraw my bias and go, here's all your cards. Have, have a look at the cards, have a good look at the cards, do your research, you need to make up your own opinion. I think, um, I, I agree that it's responsible of us to at least offer people the chance to look into things themselves. I, I do encourage that. Um, I, I, I like the fact that we are going to encourage people to actually enrol to vote. Um, that's a positive thing, going through those facts and figures before the wards. Uh, we need more people actually registered to vote. So aside from any opinion, yea or nay, that I might have, I believe that the more information that people actually have to make an informed decision and I encourage people to, to do their research, to make their informed decision, whatever that may be, um, and that's your decision to make. So that's, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, look, I agree with councillor Alston tonight, believe it or not, it, it, it does happen. Um, aside from back in two thousand and nine when we voted the same way. Look, this is a federal issue. Um, I, I think it's the responsibility of the federal government to produce the information, uh, about this, for, against, even just non-position stating information. And I think that if, if council can assist in circulating this information, that there's people that may or may not watch whatever the news channel is or may or may not have internet access, the, the libraries may be their way of getting information. Um, so I, I think whilst obviously this recommendation is, is conscious of council not taking a side and promoting for or against, um, I, I can't see the harm in, in circulating or to helping people get that information to make an informed decision. A, as far as voting against the entirety of this recommendation, I can't see that, I certainly wouldn't be voting against one, two or three. Um, so yeah, I'll, I'll be supporting this motion and I think it's, it's important that we just get information out there. We, we, we had a discussion tonight already, quite contentious that there wasn't information to be given people. Um, here, there's information that's already been gathered, we just have to pass it on and make it available to as many people as possible. Um, so yeah, I'll be supporting this purely on, on information provided basis rather than any for or against.
Okay, with no further debate, we'll now put the item, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Jackson, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Saval, those against councillors Moors, Dunn, uh, Alston and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, we'll now move on to, uh, report, uh, CC fifty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, moving that way councillor Burke, seconded, uh, councillor Sander, uh, speaking on that councillor Alston.
Uh, just a couple of quick questions, Mayor. Um, were any of these companies involved with the concrete footpath we're building from Bridges Hill to go right around the world?
Director.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you councillor Alston. I'll have to take it on notice.
Okay, I just, I'd hate to think one of these, these companies would be, they, I know they got stood down because of safety issues and I know that they had, um, power cords running across the road, the ones, I'm not saying these companies, I'm saying the company that was building the pathway up in Corriblong Street, they had the power cords running across the road, et cetera, et cetera. I hope that one of these companies, none of them are.
Um, sorry, just if I can just interrupt the director.
Sorry councillor Alston, I can clarify that that company is not on that list.
That's not, oh, that's, that's fantastic news. It, will any of these companies be asked to do the Bridges Hill finish off the pathway? The Bridges Hill pathway? Or is this for separate?
Something I'll have to take on notice, but potentially it will be one of these companies that will be bidding for.
We've got to get that finished, it's still a long way to go.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further, uh, sorry councillor Moors.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm going to throw this in here because it's virtually concrete footpath constructions and curbs and I just want to say, I want to say to the director of infrastructure, what a great job you're mended, uh, doing the Bridges Hill entrance at King Street with the new gardens and handrail. Makes it very, very looking good for the street and also the safety of the handrail for the old people. Thank you very much.
Um, no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, report WI, uh, twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. Uh, move that way councillor Hawkins, seconded, uh, councillor Burke. Uh, no debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, councillor reports. No councillor reports.